There, do we have all of our board members?
It looks like everyone is here.
Everybody is here, okay. All right.
I don't see, is Valerie Young here?
Valerie?
I don't see her.
Text her. Are you able to see if she's waiting?
No, she's not out there.
Okay, let me. Valerie said she is waiting to enter. Are you able to see June?
I don't see her. Keith, do you see her in the waiting room?
She's tried three times.
Keith, do you see her?
I have not seen her yet, no.
Should I have her?
I'll resend her the link.
Okay. I apologize for everyone attending. Give us a couple minutes to get Ms. Young on here and we'll get started.
Yeah, I just sent it.
I texted, let her know. She's trying again right now, June.
I can't see her yet. Keith, do you see her?
Not yet.
I see an iPhone coming in.
Wonder if she's, let me call her, let me see if she's. Yeah, her screen is blank. Could we at least, we could have somebody give Megan, would it be okay to have her call in by iPhone? Would you be able to?
Yes, let me call her and see.
Thank you.
So she's trying to call, she's trying to call in instead right now and use the, the phone function. I told her that if she doesn't have any success, just to text me, I will call her and I'll just put her on her phone through my phone.
Okay, all right. Give her a minute here. Do we have Valerie?
I still have not seen her come on yet.
Okay. Megan, do you want to try to get her by phone?
I'm here.
All right, we got it.
Oh, all right, Valerie, thank you.
You're welcome.
My apologies for the delay in the start of the meeting to everyone in attendance tonight. Call the meeting to order. Meet, discuss, board meeting of the Ambler School District is held on Wednesday, October 14th, 2020. This meeting is being held to take action that has come before the board. All meetings have been advertised to permit legislative action as necessary. Please rise for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance
Allegiance.
To the flag
To the flag.
Of the United States And to the Republic For which it stands One nation Under God Indivisible With liberty And justice This meeting is being recorded for district purposes. It is or may be published in part or its entirety on the district's website without express permission of meeting participants. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Angus?
Here.
Mr. Campbellong? Mrs. Curtis?
Here.
Mrs. Keigho?
Here.
Mrs. Manganello?
Here.
Mr. Metz?
Here.
Ms. Pedego?
Here.
Ms. Young?
Here.
Mrs. Fisher?
Here.
A present.
Thank you. Can I have the sunshine law, please?
Board of school directors held an executive session on Wednesday, October 14th, to discuss personnel matters, considering the purchase or lease of real estate, matter subject to attorney-client privilege and other confidentiality laws.
Thank you. Moving on to amendments to the agenda, approval of the agenda, there's none to report this evening. There are no presentations this evening. June, can you move the screen down, please? Thank you. Regarding agenda items only, in light of the state declared disaster emergency, the board has adopted modified public meeting and public comment processes, consistent with the sunshine law. These modified rules have been published in a newspaper of general circulation and on the district's website. Public comments received in advance for this virtual meeting by the board secretary will now be read.
Okay, the first comment I have is Danielle Zatche from Ambridge. I have two sons in third grade at State Street. I have many concerns with the current hybrid model of education, and I am respectfully asking the board to consider reopening the schools to five days a week in person. I can say that the issue I have, issues I have are not with the teachers. They seem to, seem to be doing the very best that they can considering the situation they are given. My issue is that we are harming our children both educationally and mentally. It is extremely difficult for a child of elementary age to focus on a teacher on a screen at home with distractions, both in the home and on the screen. They are lacking a socialization that only school can provide them. The iPads are a wonderful tool, but doing all work on a screen while starting, staring at the screen to learn all day is not proving to be a positive experience. It is hard to focus and pay attention like they would in a classroom. Their writing is suffering as they are paperless, writing on an app iPad with their finger or a stylus. I fully respect your caution when it comes to faculty and student safety during the pandemic. I am an intensive care nurse at Pittsburgh Hospital as well as a nursing professor at CCBC, and I am fully behind opening the schools to five days a week. I have seen firsthand the tragedy of this pandemic. I know the district is taking all precautions necessary to keep students and faculty safe. The cases in Beaver County are at an all-time low since the pandemic started. Other districts that have gone in person since day one remain open while others are opening back up. If they can do it, we can too. I'm aware that class sizes may cause hesitancy, but with caution and teamwork, this can be a reality. We have allowed contact sports to continue with caution, what makes sports more important than education. I am in no way saying that sports should not be happening, as my boys are still playing fall baseball. If proper planning occurs, we can do this. We are resilient town who has the support of families and the community. We can do this if we work together as faculty, parents, and students. I have complete faith in the district and hope you will make the move to get these kids back in school where they belong. Their futures are depending on it. Jolene Maslenic, Ambridge. I understand that these are difficult times for not only the students and parents, but also teachers and administration. I would like to thank all of you for doing tremendous job considering these difficult times. But I would like to stress the importance of the teachers needing to keep up to date with recording homework scores and test scores in Tyler 360 properly. Tyler 360 is a very valuable tool for parents, students, and teachers. If the grades and assignments on Tyler 360 is not accurate, it is useless to, a useless tool. This is causing a lot of stress on students and parents. Some students were being told they were ineligible to participate in sports because of failing grades, when in reality, the grades were not accurate because Tyler 360 was not up to date. Virtual, virtual learning has been a struggle for some students who were not being able to join meetings for classes. Also, technical issues with students completing an assignment or quiz and submitting their work and teachers not receiving it. There is also times when Schoology went down or loss of the internet connection. Another issue is trying to communicate with the teachers by sending a message and at times not getting a prompt response. I am sure it is very difficult for teachers to teach both virtual and live at the same time. I could not imagine the stress this has weighed on their shoulders. Will any grace or forgiveness be given to students who have had technical issue and who have been marked truant? Will our school district consider giving our parents the option of our students returning back to school in person five days per week? Virtual learning doesn't work for every student, and it is causing some students to suffer. With other surrounding schools now going back to live four to five days a week. I am hoping you will consider this option for our students as well. Thank you for listening to my concerns. Debbie in Bogshai, Economy. We would like to know what the plan is for getting our children back into school more than two days a week. We're almost six weeks into this year and zero cases. The kids are still spending time with friends, playing sports, et cetera, and still zero cases. Please consider increasing the hybrid kids to three to five days in school as other nearby districts have done. Those who aren't comfortable should have the option, stay two days or all remote. At minimum, give every, everyone a choice of doing what we're comfortable with for our children. Thank you for your consideration. Cindy McFarland, Baden. I hope all is well. I am writing to express my concerns with the hybrid learning that is currently in place in our district. First, I would like to commend the teachers and administration in our district, as this is a very difficult time for all. The teachers are handling things the best they can. My husband and I are both graduates of Ambler High School and currently reside in Baden with two children who attend State Street Elementary. Our virtual learning experience has not been very positive for my daughter. She was enrichment in kindergarten and first grade and started the school year failing her tests and struggling with navigating the iPad, along with constant interruptions by the other children in the virtual learning classroom. It is beyond frustrating as a parent to see our daughter struggling. Virtual days lead my daughter into multiple breakdowns, frustrations, and extra stress she doesn't need. In addition, with virtual learning, there is a lack of interaction, lack of motivation, and social isolation. Kids strive, strive off of structure and learning hands-on, especially get grades K through three. My kindergarten is adjusting well, as he knows no different. But his backpack is very heavy with all the books he has to take to and from school. It weighs in at 10 pounds. Gym class is a joke. Why can sporting events take place, but our kids can't have normal gym classes and are forced to watch half hour YouTube videos of exercise? Thankfully, my husband and I have flexible jobs where we can be home for three virtual days to assist our children. Other kids are not as fortunate. Our district children started the school year behind as the 1920 school year abruptly ended, and we were forced to homeschool our kids. Enough is enough. Let's get our kids back in the classroom. If surrounding districts can go back to in-class for four to five days a week, why can't Ambridge? I would like to know the benefits of virtual learning versus being in the classroom. Since school has been in session, how many COVID cases do we have in our district? Please consider having the kids go back four days a week, or at least give families the opportunity to choose between hybrid or in-school four days. Ashley and Tim Newmeyer, Baden. We have a seven-year-old in second grade and a five-year-old in kindergarten. We happen to be fortunate enough that one of us can stay home to help our young children navigate the virtual learning atmosphere that Ambertest facilitated. Despite this blessing, our kids are not receiving the education they would if they were in school five days per week. Distractions are a, are a bunt at home, and a full-time attention which is needed cannot be given to both children. Instead of learning in the classroom, they are learning in their bedrooms. One parent cannot help a kindergarten student and a second grader at the same time, given their schedules. They both need their full-time attention, given the coordinated structure the 20 school year has forced upon them. Would Ambertest ask a teacher to both teach kindergarten class and the second grader class at the same time? Switching from one to the other? Absolutely not. Furthermore, is this about lessening exposure? A large amount of kids play sports together, attend daycares and/or churches for virtual learning assistance? If that is the intent, we surely hope you recognize that it is not worth jeopardizing the good education all kids in the district deserve. It comes down to the fact that elementary kids are unable to focus on an iPad for hours a day. They need to be in the classroom. They are falling behind. Our children are entitled to a proper education. They are absolutely not getting one. Please consider offering us the full-time option. Local schools are starting to offer it. I believe we should also be giving the option. Thank you for your time and consideration in this matter. Lori Hiranco, Economy Borough. As other surrounding school districts are successfully running a five-day in-school week, what is the district's directive to get back to five-day in-school plan? Please share the data and matrix that you are using to justify the current hybrid learning platform. What data and matrix need to be met to move forward to a five-day school plan? Is there any financial funding that the school has received that influences the decision to run on any certain learning platform? Maxing Inara, Baden. I am wondering what needs to happen so we are able to do this. I know several of the neighboring districts surrounding us are open for five days a week in-person classes, and I would hope Ambertest is working towards making this happen.
June, excuse me one minute. If, if all of the attendees could please make sure that your microphone is on mute, we are getting background feedback, please. Thank you.
Okay, the next one, Tabitha Sykes, Ambridge. I have a sixth grader at the junior high and I have a fifth grader, second and first grader at Highland Elementary. I am emailing because I, as many others, feel our children need to be back in school full-time five days a week. Virtual learning is not working at all for any of my children, along with many other children from families I talk to. Families who have chosen virtual learning have the family's support and time to do so, and that's great for them. But being forced to do virtual learning has become a hassle and a problem. I didn't agree to this, and it is not fair that my fully healthy children are missing out on an education they deserve. We want five days back in school as an option. Kylie Recipio, Ambridge. As we enter our seventh week of the 2021 school year, there are many concerns in our community and district about reopening our schools. The data on COVID-19 shows that cases have slowed, and the district has proven to use cleaning methods and follow other guidelines to ensure the safety of our students and staff. Not only is the safety of our students and staff important, but so is their education. I can speak personally for my kindergartner and first grader at Economy Elementary who participate in hybrid learning model. Due to the nature of the virtual learning setup, there are many times where my children are not completing their work or scoring properly or assignments assessments, which is not a true reflection of their abilities. Young children who cannot read cannot be independent on their iPads. Also, the amount of daily screen time is detrimental to their health and development. These kids need hands-on learning and experiences that can, cannot be simulated through a device. My kids' attitudes and overall morale is much better when they get to spend the day in school. We need to take action to get our kids more in-person learning, even if it means four days. As a full-time working parent, this has been challenging. If there becomes no need in sight for this current model of learning, I will have to look into alternative options. One of those options would be sending my children to Baden Academy, as Ambertest students typically have priority. Other options would be full-time cyber school, where the online teacher can better focus on working with my students, ensuring that there are skills not slipping through the cracks. No option at this point is easy, but I have to do what is best for my family if our district is not going to support the need of our community. Thus far, our teachers have done a wonderful job and are working harder than ever to help their students. This isn't enough. There will be huge gaps in education, increased learning support needs, and a generation of children trying to play catch-up. Please think about these children and the needs in our district. This is not a conducive way to learn. Also, consider sending out a parent survey to get honest feedback. No one has even asked us what is working and what isn't. Some families may continue to choose fully remote learning choices, but four to five days of in-person needs to be an option. I anticipate discussion at the next school board meeting on this concern, as I know it's the voice of many parents in our district. Heather Williams, Baden, PA. What is the plan to get our children back in the classroom on a full-time basis? Cindy DeShane, Baden. I am writing today to talk about our current hybrid model of education. The biggest question I have is when will it end? Every day I sit with students at Safe Haven, and I wonder how much longer they will have to learn this way. With the threat of flu season in January and February, why are our kids kept out of school now? I have spoken to many people from different school districts, and I think we need to reevaluate what we are doing. In Avonworth, kids go to school for a half a day and get all of their core classes taught to them every day. When they are at home for the other half of the day, the students participate in music, art, gym virtually. That way, they are getting face-to-face on the core subjects. Only seeing the teacher two days a week is not working for the kids, at least not the younger ones. Please consider sending the students back to school. If the numbers for COVID rise too much in our area, then send the kids back to virtual learning. But we have to try to face-to-face, we have to try face-to-face learning. The World Health Organization have changed their stance on lockdowns and have since said forcing people indoors and shutting everything down is causing more harm than good. This includes schools. The students are missing out on a proper education. I have talked to many parents who cannot handle the workload with their kids and still try to put food on the table. We have children that are at high risk for child abuse, now secluded from teachers, who show them the only love they may ever receive in a day. Other schools are bringing their students back. I am asking you consider doing the same for ours. They need to be back in class. They need some sense of normalcy in their lives. We permit our children to play sports that has extremely close contact with no issues. We are letting our kids participate in fundraisers with no issues. We need to get them back to school. That is the most important thing for our children right now. Give parents the choice if they want to be back in school or be in virtual learning all day. I know it will work. I am asking each of you to consider sending the kids back to school on a more frequent basis. Braylin Tarpley, Ambridge. I am writing this email to express my dissatisfaction with the current learning options available for the families in the district. I will provide some personal background information on my family in hopes that you gain some insight from a perspective maybe different than your own. I am a single mom of two boys that are currently students in the district. My oldest son is in third grade at Economy, and my youngest son is in pre-k at Highland. I work full-time as a psychiatric RN, often working overtime to provide on-call crisis intervention. I am the sole provider for my children, not receiving support from their father or eligible for any state assistance. In 2019, I chose to purchase a home in Ambridge Area School District. Despite the ridiculously high school taxes, as a graduate of, graduate of Ambridge, I believe my children would receive the same quality of education that I did. As a healthcare provider, I fully understand the concerns related to COVID-19, but as a mother, I am more concerned about my children's physical, mental, social, and emotional health, all which have been suffering since the start of this pandemic. The American Academy of Pediatrics also identifies that children learn best in the classroom. Although some families may find that virtual learning works for them, I am here to let you know that this is not working for ours. My third grader's grades have been suffering, and I attribute that directly to not being in a structured classroom setting, where his mind is being stimulated and he is motivated to perform at the best of his ability. He used to have such a love for school and a desire to learn, but now I am slowly watching his self-esteem diminish and all of his frustrations build. For my youngest son, who has been identified as having special needs, things have been even more challenging. It is impossible for him to do his assignments on his tablet or activities without guidance and support, which means we have to find time to fit in our already overwhelming schedule. And if I am being honest, sometimes there is literally no time, so it doesn't get done. As a mother, it is not a good feeling to feel as though I am failing my children because they are not learning as they should be. I cannot afford to quit my job and stay home with them to do their schoolwork three days a week. I cannot afford to hire someone to provide the structure and support they require to thrive in the virtual learning environment. The evidence shows that the overall benefit The evidence shows that the overall benefits of children being in the classroom far outweigh the risk associated with COVID-19. I understand there are concerns related to social distancing in the classroom. However, there have been times when my child was literally the only kid on the entire bus. There have also been times where my child is home virtually learning, and there was only one child in the actual classroom. As a parent, that is frustrating to see and hard to understand why my child can't be in that classroom when I know he would benefit so much more. I am asking each and every one of you to give our children the opportunity to learn to the best of their ability. I don't think that this is asking too much as both a parent and a taxpayer in the district. Many schools in the surrounding area are offering the option to return to in-person instruction full-time, along with the options of hybrid or completely remote. Please give us those same options, though, so that we can decide what works best for our students and our families. Patty Jo Lambert, Economy Borough. I am writing to express my sincere desire for our district to please seriously consider bringing students back to the school five days per week or give them the option to remain virtual five days per week. While everyone is doing their best, this current system is most definitely not working, and it is certainly not working for my seventh grader, who has never struggled in school like this, like he is now. In fact, two different middle school teachers both told me that in their twenty-plus years of teaching, they have never seen student grades so poor. This is just feedback from two teachers, but this is proof that we need our kids to get back into school so they can learn. Please help our students. There are enough plans in place to still abide by the COVID rules. Let's take the next step and make it work. After talking to quite a few parents and sharing our own concerns about how this year is going in this hybrid environment, there is just no way to replace the kids being in school in person. Kids are simply not able to focus and listen when they are at home. They are working. There are working parents, pets, siblings, and many other distractions, and there is no way for the teacher to redirect and refocus them like they can do in school. I think the online version can be very successful for students who are self-motivated and disciplined, but for kids who don't have those qualities, this is extremely difficult regardless of the grade. While the teachers are doing their best using Schoology, there was never any training for the parents. I consider myself fairly intelligent, but my husband and I have very have very much struggled to figure out how it works, how teachers are posting assignments, what is homework, and what is not homework, et cetera. I'm not exaggerating when I tell you that I am spending at least thirty to sixty minutes per day trying to go through every class, review what they are doing, figure out what is homework, and then assist my son in making a plan to get his work done. This doesn't even count the time we spend actually doing the work. As a mother who works more than full-time, the amount of extra stress and arguing that is happening in my house is unprecedented, and then this and this and this is my youngest of three boys. This isn't my first go-run. If I am struggling, I can't imagine how other parents with middle school and elementary school students are dealing with this, especially when there are multiple children in the home. While Schoology is probably a good solution, there was never any thought put into helping the parents understand how all of this works. If the parents aren't able to figure it out, how can we support our kids and give them a positive academic experience given the circumstances? I assure you that I am not in this in the minority of parents who feel this way. I think now that the nine weeks is nearing its end, there should be a huge assessment, survey, et cetera, that reaches out to parents, teachers, and students to get feedback on how this has been working. I think the board members will be very surprised at how difficult this is and how much stress has been added in our homes specifically due to this learning situation. Please, 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 listen to the parents and teachers who are dealing with this every single day. Other schools are going five days, and we should have that option too. While this is while while this hybrid plan had wonderful intentions, it doesn't work for the majority of the kids. Talking to the teachers about how students are performing academically is all the proof you need. Since we have successfully managed COVID in our district, there is really no reason not to move to five-day-in-person and a five-day-virtual option. Please spend time talking to the teachers. They are the ones who really are really seeing the negative impact this is having on our kids. They don't have to live with it, but they have to see it firsthand. I think the teachers are doing well, but many kids are just not able to adapt to this. The long-term consequences scares me. PSSA scores, SAT scores, GPAs, and more are all going to dramatically lower because kids are simply not focusing and absorbing the material like they can do in person. Kim Velella, Ambridge. As a grandmother and volunteer at the newly established Safe Haven Learning Pod, located at Good Samaritan Parish in Ambridge, I have had the pleasure of working with approximately twenty-five children from the district. Safe Haven's original plan for targeted individuals were were Ambridge Area School District students in K through three who were identified at risk, along with students that are a part of the Latino community where language barriers exist. Our goal was to simply provide a safe and supervised space where children can come and remotely learn together. Our mission is to provide children in need a friendly space and a smiling face. It was not our intent to provide formal instruction or typically or typical daily childcare. The Learning Pod has grown out of need to include students from K through eighth grade. Our volunteers have become one-on-one tutors in order to guide the children through the online learning process. Working with these children since the beginning of school year, I have a broad overview and insight of daily classroom operations, especially in all three of the elementary schools. I have witnessed the difficulties and frustrations of the students and teachers alike. We have seen children who have had a hundred incomplete assignments in their queue. These children are struggling to keep up. Parents and children are overwhelmed. With with each passing day, the children of our community are falling further and further behind. We are failing our children, especially the children in K through third grades. The early elementary years are the most important years in child's life of learning. Parents and teachers know these years are the foundation and building blocks for years to come. U.S. News Today stated, "Research shows the average annual learning gains for children in grades K through two are dramatically greater than those for the subsequent years of school."
Please mute your your background, please, getting feedback.
Moreover, the outcome of early education, particularly whether or not a child can read proficiently by third grade, is a powerful predicate for for later school and life outcomes. Research also shows by third grade, low-performing schools have left many children so far behind they never catch up. Our children lost an entire nine weeks of formal education in the spring. According to Brown University Annenberg Institute for School Reform, U.S. public school students will go into this new school year learning less than half of the math and just under seventy percent of the language arts skills they would have acquired had school remained open last spring. We, as a community, cannot afford to lose another nine weeks of educating our children. I am witness to a sampling across the board of our K through third graders who are not proficient in the fundamentals, many who cannot write, read, or spell at an appropriate level. I am witness to the hybrid model as a failed model, lacking consistency, accountability, and most important, a sense of normalcy. These children need structure. They need to be in school, person-to-person, on a daily basis if their families so choose. Because schools are vital to learning and to the overall well-being of our children, the American Academy of Pediatrics in late June strongly encouraged school districts to prepare for students to return to school in person this fall. School is also a refuge for many children, especially for those suffering from abuse, neglect, or food insecurities. Cited the Child Abuse Prevention Center, under CAPTA, school employees are mandated reporters of child abuse and neglect. If schools do not reopen in-person education, an estimated eight-hundred-and-seven-thousand-seven-hundred cases of child abuse could go unreported this year. Is this something Amberberry School District is willing to risk? The mission of the Amberberry School District is to bridge the leading in learning, preparing students for the future through academic excellence. Please adhere to the mission set forth. Please join the progressive leaders of school districts throughout Beaver County and surrounding counties. The Washington Post wrote a series, "Back to School in a Pandemic", citing many reasons why schools should be return in-person learning. Please, as a member of the Amberberry School District School Board, it is your duty and responsibility to look at the available science and data. Experts like renowned Dr. Anthony Fossey, Director of NIAID, promotes in-person classroom as being safe with the recommended precautionary measures. We must prioritize in-person learning for kids who need it most. Lastly, the National Academics of Science, Engineering, and Medicine called for schools to be reopened, especially for those students in kindergarten through fifth grade in person, as well as for students who require additional support. I urge you to make a motion tonight to start the transition process to our children back into the classrooms for in-person instruction five days a week. Please see to the wants and needs of our community. Please do not fail our children.
June?
Yes.
Yes, I'll take one for you, okay?
Okay.
Jessica Dixon, Economy. My name is Jessica Dixon. My children attend Economy Elementary. I have a son in second grade and a daughter in kindergarten. We really need to allow our kids the opportunity to attend five days in-person schooling. My children are both very good students with a true love for education. However, the hybrid option is no longer working for us. They are missing out on so much of their crucial education during this crazy time, as well as the socially aspect that plays such a huge role in their development at this age. Although the teacher, staff, and school district are doing an amazing job wading through this strange way of learning, there's definitely so much that is missing with the hybrid method. My kids have both expressed their dislike for virtual learning compared to actual in-person learning. At the very least, I ask that a poll/survey be sent to all AASD parents to get a better understanding of where they stand. Would they like to send their kids five days? Would they like to remain virtual? Would they prefer cyber? What do they feel the best way to do so would be? Would they give us a true sense of how many kids would come back into each classroom if the five-day option was offered? As a school, we could then see the best and safest way to remain socially distant while offering a full-fledged education. If so many other schools in the area are able to do so and do so safely, I do not know why Ambridge cannot at least try also. We owe it to our children to at least try to regain some sort of normalcy through such a crazy time. Do not let our children fall behind with their education because we chose not to fight for what they deserve. Thank you for taking the time to consider this option. We want nothing but the best for our children. Amanda Briscoe, Baden. I have two sons attending State Street Elementary. I'm writing to ask that you reconsider the hybrid model and open the schools back up in person learning to those who wish to send their children. While the hybrid or full-remote style of learning is beneficial to some families, it's not for every household. We have found it to be incredibly difficult for our children to learn remotely. The teachers have been wonderful, patient, and hardworking, but this type of environment is not beneficial to their learning. Having our children stare at an electronic device for close to six hours a day has created a significant change in behavior and mood. Their lack of focus on the lessons, frustrations, and emotional distress is a direct result of the excessive screen time. We are not a household that allows time during the school week, and with this type of learning, our children have gone from zero to six hours a day, five days a week of screen time. We have attempted to provide a healthy learning environment here at home for them, but it has proven to be an environment that they will thrive in. It has not proven to be an environment that they will thrive in. Our children are permitted to play sports for the district. They should be able to have the option to be in school full-time. I understand the risks of COVID and do not take it lightly, but we need to be considering the emotional, social, and educational disadvantages that the children are being faced with. Please consider making a move to get our children back in school in a proper educational setting where they belong. Stephanie Peori, Freedom, PA. I understand that there are many comments this evening imploring the district to return full-time to school. While I understand the hybrid plan is not ideal for all families, I just want to share how well it has worked for ours. It is a program that deserves praise, as our experiences have been unlike friends with children in other districts. The Ambridge hybrid program has made the best of an unfortunate situation, a global pandemic, the likes of which none of us nor our school leaders have ever experienced. My son, a first grader at Economy Elementary, is engaged in learning from eight-thirty to two-thirty each day he is at home. He is able to participate in live-stream instruction that is organized, purposeful, and exciting. His teacher, Mrs. Lisa Kovach, has done an excellent job of crafting new instructional practices to meet the needs of all learners. She manages the classroom environment with apparent ease and holds each learner accountable, whether in school or at home. As an educator myself, I have been impressed. I do believe that all students will need to return to full-time in-person instruction at some point. I have listened to many families who desire this, and I understand why they wish for this to happen. I myself would love for my son to return full-time in a way that is safe and appropriate. However, prior to sending students back full-time, the district must address the large class sizes. Our teachers are hands-on educators, and I'm certain they would each love to have all of their students back full-time. With many classes over twenty-five students, this is unsafe for everyone. Should the district be planning to vote on a full-time return to school, what steps will be taken to ensure the recommendations of the CDC are followed? Their recommendations include no more than twenty-five people in a classroom, including the instructor. Should the majority of the students return, we would have classrooms out of compliance. Truthfully, a primary classroom with more than twenty students needing to social distance is questionable. I am basing that on my own experience in the classroom. If the conversation is shifting to full return to school, I hope the focus of the conversation is on the safety of the students and staff above anything else. June, you want to take up from there?
Yes. I have a comment from Michelle Wilson, Amberberry Education Association President. Dimitri Banister, a twenty-eight-year-old elementary school teacher, Columbia, South Carolina. Ashley DeMarinus, a thirty-four-year-old middle school teacher, and Patossi, Missouri. Susan Michael, forty-seven-year-old from Harrisburg, Arkansas. Are names that are public knowledge for a tragic reason. These are names of teachers who have died of COVID-19 in recent weeks and added to the steadily increasing list of teachers who have died from the virus since the spring of this year. My name is Michelle Wilson, and I am the president of the Amberberry Education Association, and one of my biggest fears is an Amberberry staff member, student, or their family member being added to the list. As teachers, we want nothing more than to have our students back in the classroom. However, the safety of both the students and the staff is our highest priority. Over the summer, many hours were spent creating the district's health and safety plan, which was felt to address the needs and concerns of all parties. Some area districts selected to have a full-remote start to the school year or do or do not provide the live streaming of instruction option available, as does Ambridge. The staff in Ambridge embrace the hybrid option, which includes live streaming instruction, and spent many hours over the summer preparing for this new adventure. There is an understood risk of returning for any form of in-person instruction, but with a detailed and well-designed reopening plan, staff was supportive of a return to in-person learning. The following is current information on the topic of coronavirus in schools. In an article from the Harvard Gazette, the introductory paragraph states, "In the most comprehensive study of COVID-19 pediatric patients to date, researchers provide critical data showing that children play a large role in the community spread..." researchers provide critical data showing that children play a large role in the community spread of COVID-nineteen than previously thought." In another report from the CDC, it is stated twelve kids who likely caught COVID-nineteen at three childcare centers in Utah went on to spread the virus elsewhere and infected some parents and siblings, according according to a new study published Friday by the Center of Disease Control and Prevention. The CDC recently updated guidance to the state virus can be spread by both large droplets and aerosols. The virus can be spread through the air. The district has stated individuals have not demonstrated symptoms when concerns were presented by the association. Recent studies show up to forty percent of those infected are asymptomatic. In September, according to an analysis by the American Academy of Pediatrics and the Children's Hospital Association, there has been a ninety percent increase in the number of COVID-nineteen cases among children in the United States over the last four weeks. At the end of September, the American Academy of Pediatrics found children of all ages now make up ten percent of all USS US cases, up from two percent in April. I would like to encourage the Board of Directors to read the literature in regards to the topic of coronavirus. I gladly provide current literature on this topic if needed. As we move into the cold and flu season, is the district is the district is now thinking of return to full instruction or increasing the amount of time spent in-person learning? It does not appear a decision to move in this direction is based on science and recommendations from professionals. Children are not blockers of the disease or immune, as is clearly stated in multiple studies and reports on the topic of children and coronavirus. Is the district prepared to implement the steps necessary to change the current learning model to ensure the safety of students and staff? Plastic barriers to stop the spread of aerosols and large droplets. Air purifies for cla- air purifiers for classroom and upgrade of the HVAC system and ensure at least six feet of distance in classroom. The district's monthly board meetings are still being held via Zoom. When questioned regarding the lack of in-person meetings, the response included the district is following guidance regarding this topic. If the guidance is acceptable to protect the Board of School Directors, I am curious why the Board of Directors would not follow guidance to protect their staff and families of the district who they took an oath to serve. The current current guidance for Beaver County states the district should be utilizing a hybrid or full-remote model. The recent data for Beaver County has an incident rate of thirty-two-point-two people infected for a hundred thousand people in the most recent seven-day period. According to state guidance, this would mean a blended or full-remote learning model should be in place for school districts when it within Beaver County. The association has concerns regarding the impact and increase of an in-person instruction will have on the overall learning model. A key component of education for all students is consistency. Increasing the number of students in the classroom leads to an increase in exposure. Already, other districts in the area have needed to move to full-remote learning because of positive tests or the inability to staff the buildings because of lack of teachers. Students moving between multiple forms of instruction, hybrid and remote, is not a sound educational plan. While the staff would love to have all students safely return to school full-time or increase the amount of in-person learning, the current circumstances do not lend themselves to either of those situations. The current learning model is providing in-person learning and at this point has been successful in keeping the buildings open. A change to the learning model could lead to full-remote learning. With all of the issues and concerns, the staff have continued to report to work and attempt to provide the students the best learning environment possible, given the circumstances. At this time, the association is requesting the current plan is working and we should continue on this path. We regret, we request or takes the recommendation of the Superintendent Association reopening committee's plan into account regarding the form of instruction for the district. The plan is working. Please let it work. One person negatively impacted by this virus would be too many. I don't want an Amberjerry staff member, student or their family member added to the list of those who have died from COVID-nineteen and and have my next message to the board in regards to the death of a member of our Bridger family. A plan was agreed to. It needs to be implemented implemented appropriately. Please remember the district learning model could have an impact on someone's family in a way that wouldn't was not anticipated. Michelle Wilson. And that is it for the comments.
Thank you, June.
You're welcome.
Before we begin with some board feedback, I believe Dr. Pascarella and our solicitor, Megan Turnbull, have a few comments to add. Megan, would you like to begin?
Sure. Well, first, I want to thank the Board Secretary, Mrs. Buehler, for for spending that 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 long forty-five minutes with the help of Dr. Pascarella reading, reading all of those public comments. I do want to note that that the board does have policies about public comments and there are there laws out there. It's the sunshine law that we point to for for public comment purposes. This evening, all the 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 board strategically and very openly chose to have all of those comments read. And it's out of an interest of hearing the listening and and making sure that those community members had had that moment. But public comment, and you can see it even on the screen share right now, that public comment is is typically for at least this portion for agenda items and not one of those public comments. Were were tied to a pot to an action item that the board is considering at this time. As we've continued to on the education side and on the the meeting side, tried to to make modifications to increase participation. I do want to also note that one of those comments, the the last one kind of question, why, why is the board still using this online model for for our meetings and not and why are we not in person? And to be honest, there there's been continuing dialogue and I'm sure there that will continue with the board to determine when the right time is, if any, to to get back into buildings and having live meetings, but that would also mean that the you know, a very, I'm sure a good number of the eighty-eight people who are currently in this meeting may not be able to join us in that way. So this forum has really increased participation and the availability of board information in real time to to its constituents and I and we see that as truly as an upside. And this is consistent with the health and safety plan that the that the board has adopted, that the administration recommended and that the committee, including many teachers, thought were was a good idea. And that's to to minimize the number of people, and here it's eighty-eight people, from extra people being in our buildings and 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 sharing information that that isn't necessary when we when we do have these technological opportunities. So it's consistent with what a lot of other boards are are currently doing still. But we appreciate all of the feedback. We will likely be making modifications to public comment to the extent that there are non-agenda items. I think what, so long as we're still in this in this model, what we'll we'll publish what the the modified rules are going to be in advance of next week's meeting. In all likelihood, non-agenda items will be shared directly with every board member in an unedited way and also then summarized during the during the live meetings so that it is captured and that agenda items are are read wholesale during the public meeting. So with that, if anyone has any questions or comments about that process, I I think either Dr. Pascarella or President Fisher are are open and available to to discuss those. And then as to the substance of responses, I will turn it over to Dr. Pascarella.
Thank you. First of all, as as mentioned, thank you, June, and thanks everyone for their comments. In particular, thank you to the parents, students and and all of our staff. I encompass all staff and thank them for all of their efforts that they have done in our reopening. I was pleased to see that, you know, although there may be some differentiating of opinions on success and such, that everyone was definitely indicating that efforts were made by our teachers and staff, which I I do really appreciate people, you know, noting that because our staff is working really, really hard and trying to do their personal best. These are challenging times and we continue to try to do our best while keeping our students safe. The reopening committee spent a lot of time trying to come up with a plan and provide options to families. Was surveyed while staying in 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 conjunction with the CDC guidance. And I think that's the key component. We did follow the guidance. And we, my recommendation is to continue to follow the guidance of the CDC. And at this given point, that's where I'm at. I know that it is all of our goals, teachers, staff, parents, that when it is safe that we get back to to learning as we know and love for that social, emotional and act true academic success for our students. But at this given time, it it is still my recommendation that, you know, we could get some some feedback possibly, and I know Mrs. Fisher may 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 talk about that as well. But I I I think it's important to for all of you to hear from me how much I am appreciative of your efforts with your students and understand the challenge and stress that this may be causing. But also be thankful for our staff who has really worked hard to try to provide the best education for these students as possible. Before I move on, I would like to just share something that Mr. King, the pandemic coordinator, and I often review, he brings it in and shows that to me. So June, I just have two basic attachments that I think you're going to be able to pull up. The first is determining instructional models. And if you look at this on your screen, just give me a thumbs up, somebody, if you can see that on the screen. Okay, great. So if you look at what you have there, it would it would tell you whether we are low, moderate, moderate, excuse me, or substantial. And it kind of talks a little bit about if you look at the column incidence rate for a hundred thousand residents in the most recent seven days. So you would have to basically have less than ten to consider from the recommendations of of PDE and the Health Department to consider full in-person and you could still consider the blended hybrid model. If you have between ten and a hundred, then you're, you you know, you'd be encouraged to do the blended hybrid model or full-remote. And if you had more than a hundred. So June, if you could kind of give the up-to-date data that we were looking at from the Health Department website today, you could kind of see that the county of Beaver, if you're looking at the cases that you have there. Incidents per, you're going to scroll right across there and you're going to be able to see that we're at, I believe that's thirty-five-point-eight, which is more than the ten, obviously, suggesting that, you know, the Department of Health would encourage us to continue with our hybrid, you know, model as well, or full online or full remote, which we are providing that option to students. While we are also indicating that we have a hybrid method for for the parents and students who are looking for that. I know this is difficult and challenging and really trying on all of us and our patients. And we all want to get back to normalcy, but I think, you know, trusting in the health professionals, in my opinion, in the state and the recommendations coming from CDC and our on our Health Department along with our staff. It seems to me that at this given point, you know, following in conjunction with those recommendations, I continue to recommend that we we stay with our current plan but continue to monitor that as things progress. You could go back to the agenda, June, at this given point. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pascarella, for your comments. And I would just like to piggyback a little bit on on what both Ms. Turnbull and Dr. Pascarella in thanking all of our families and parents and concerned citizens with their their letters of interest and opinion on on our model. I think we're all in agreement on the board that, you know, the best optimal choice would be for our children to be in school five days a week. And we understand that, given the circumstances. And in developing a committee that I believe has around thirty people, correct, Dr. Pascarella? Which includes teaching staff and medical personnel, parents. And if Mr. Mr. King or Dr. Pascarella could jump in there, am I, am I correct?
There's like thirty-one members of that committee.
Okay. One of, one thing I would like to possibly suggest after, you know, go reading through the comments and and looking at concern would be, I I believe one of our first steps as a suggestion should be to survey our staff and get some feedback from the staff on how they feel things are working, what it what maybe is not working for them, what if there are, you know, alternatives or suggestions, comments that they would would like to see or or different areas that that they feel we should be considering. I I believe I I would like to suggest from a board standpoint that we we get that survey out fairly quickly, maybe by the end of the week to staff. And if we could agree upon that next Wednesday, that maybe we could revisit, re-read those results, revisit those results and have a public, public discussion in regards to those. And then moving forward from there, we will continue to assess as a board after we get some staff feedback. And I I I'm sure that it that one of the other concerns would be to send, you know, send a survey as well to the to the parents. And I understand that as well. And I thought if we could begin with staff survey and get get their feedback and then move forward after we have discussion at the the meeting next week to proceed with getting feedback from families as well. And and anybody else on the board can jump in here with any any comments or any questions you may have for Dr. Pascarella or Doc, Mr. King or Ms. Turnbull at this point. What, before before we do that, can you speak a little bit on staffing at all, either Dr. Pascarella or Mr. King? And where we are in relation?
Yeah, so I mean, a general, I could talk in in general statements. You know, staff, in addition, obviously is doing their very best to handle the sub-s shortage that's facing not only the Amberjerry School District, but I would say the state and probably the part of the nation. And, you know, that often equates to them having to do some coverage planning periods and and planning outside of again, like to publicly thank them for because they're able to to cover that and and plan at a later date, which there's a lot more planning that goes, quite frankly, goes into this type of education. There's a lot of planning when you have students in front of you and students remotely. And they're doing that, a lot of that, you know, they're they're having to do that outside of the workday because they're using their workday to cover for each other. So I I would indicate that I thank them for that, but I also would say to the board and the community that the shortage that we are faced with as far as substitutes goes beyond Amberjerry. Actually, we are pretty competitive in what we're trying to pace up as compared to some of our colleagues in the county and in the area. We're we're doing okay, but we we definitely are feeling the shortage. So I would say that that is a factor too, making sure that we have the appropriate staff, that we're following our plan, that we're getting our guidance from the Health Department, has created some situations where, you know, we we do need to look for additional substitutes and often use our own staff to do so.
Thank you. Another point I wanted to mention and I and I, you know, parents may have already taken this route, but for those of you that may have not, you know, it's very important that you try to make some contact with the teacher. I think in in following, you know, a chain of command and and possibly the principal, if there are, you know, issues that aren't being resolved at that level. We as a board are glad, very glad to receive any information you give us and we will continue to to respond to that and and take everything into consideration. And and I personally did try to respond to every every comment I I did receive as the president. And if I missed anybody, I apologize, but I, my door is always open and willing. Feel free to to reach me by email if there is anything else concerning. But I'd also like to open it up now to see if we have any other, any other board comments that from any other of the board members, anybody would like to add.
I just have a question regarding staffing. So Dr. Pascarella, I mean, I don't know what other. if, if you, I think you probably talked to other superintendents. So if we're, if we have a staffing shortage, a sub-s shortage right now, I mean, if, if we change the way we delivered our school, and for example, let's see, say many staff members went on leave, just for example, like would we be able to staff the school based on the current environment of the sub-s shortage? Do you know where I'm going with this? I'm just trying to.
Yeah, yes. Sorry, I was just trying to unmute. I apologize. Yeah. I mean, I think what you're saying is, is if, if we change this, if the board were to change this or we were to move in another direction, although it's not my sole reason for my recommendation to not do so. I think you bring up a point or a question that I would answer by saying, yes, staffing would continue to be an issue. And I think your question was if more folks were to take a leave or there was some quarantining issues, for example, would we continue to struggle or possibly struggle more than we are right now? And, and, you know, this would only be an opinion, not a fact, but my, my opinion would be yes. I mean, we would have more and more difficulties to do so. And it very well could end up leading to the point where we would have to go full remote for everybody because we wouldn't have the staff to monitor the students.
Okay. And I, I'm a proponent. I, I really appreciate the public comments that we received, all of them. And I think they're well researched and they come from a great place. So I'm very interested in understanding, like perhaps the form of a survey as several of the public comment, comments recommended and also President Fisher. I would love to see that information just so that I can make a good, you know, a good solid decision on going forward. So Dr. Paschera, do you, do you, are you in contact with superintendents who run their schools five days a week? And do you have feedback from them? I don't want to put you on the spot, so maybe we could follow up after, but I'm just curious of what they're seeing.
We, we, we do have contact and brief updates around the counties. Some, some school districts that are going five days, there, there aren't too many right now in our county that I'm aware of, our county or, or another county is going full five days. I know it is progressing in that nature, but I don't think, to the best of my knowledge, and I don't, I, maybe I don't have the most up-to-date information, but I don't think we have too many going five days. I know the ones that have gone that way from the beginning of the year in our county. One, in fact, had a very large building and I didn't specifically ask the question on how they would be staffing that due to, to a smaller population. That was Rochester, I believe. I, I don't know exactly how they're staffing that by separating the students and socially distancing them, or if it's just the numbers. So we didn't get into that great of detail, but I know in general, when we taught that, that was one individual, one individual school system that was doing that, and it was brought to my attention that they have a much larger building with a lot of space as compared to the number of students. I didn't get into the exact details of their staffing, for example, so I can't speak exactly to their, to their program. But we do speak about that. And we, we've also heard, you know, some of the public knowledge where, you know, other school districts have had incidents of COVID and had to shut their, their schools down, which, you know, if that occurred with us, we would have to do that as well in, in coordination with what the health department would recommend based upon PDE guidance. So I don't want to speak to somebody else's plan in great detail. I don't think that's fair. But I use that as one example in the brief overview that was given at a meeting.
Yeah. And I, I just, I think it's important for us to know that information. And so maybe it is public knowledge, or maybe, you know, several board members can also try to seek that knowledge that I would just anticipate if schools are open five days a week, that they may have a much higher expense for, from a sub-perspective because they probably have to acquire more subs. So I'm just curious about that. I want to know, I'm, I'm interested in the surveys. And then also I'm interested in understanding more about the IEP and students with IEPs, not specifically, but more on the process to say, okay, when is a child deemed having to go to school four days a week? And is there something we could put proactively to identify those students and to help them get the right education? So those, those are the thing, those, these are just my questions, the, the information I'd like to have.
The last, the last comment that you didn't, you didn't make in regards to special education students. I wouldn't talk about any individual student, obviously. But as the process, as we're looking at a process, you know, it's an IEP team decision, in which case the team would get together. The team makes up teachers, administration and parents. And when they talk about that, they would look at the different needs of the students and determine whether or not we would be able to have them qualify to come more days a week, up to four days. And if the classrooms could in fact be socially distanced underneath our guidelines to do that. So it doesn't mean you will qualify. It also doesn't mean you will not qualify. But if any parent has any concern, as do our staff, they work together as a team to try to create meetings and, and help to support the, the children for success.
Okay. Thank you. Any other board member comments?
I have a question regarding this survey. Can we possibly check on the engagement level of our students that are remote learning on the hybrid days? One of the biggest concerns that we're hearing from parents is the lack of engagement. While some teachers are doing a fabulous job, it appears some are giving more task-oriented and busy work and parents are schooling their children during the day and then the amount of homework in the evening and the communication level. So can we see, while the union has stated the safety and concern of the students and themselves in their letter, which I appreciate them voicing their concerns to all of us. But I would like to know what they are seeing in that engagement and the learning? And is the essential learning that students need being accomplished?
Just one comment back to that, that I would like to highlight, right? And that is the fact that I can't speak to every other district, but I know many districts, when they are doing a hybrid model, they are doing where students have to do a lot of work on their own as opposed to where we are trying to engage when at all possible through technology devices so that the student is hearing their teacher. And in, and in doing so, I think that should increase the communication and engagement. I definitely can understand the concern that was brought up in some of our comments about screen time. And that's a long time for young children to, to look at that. But I also know that the survey had indicated that from the, from the spring till now, that we were really looking for a lot more engagement, in particular, that interaction between the teacher and the student. And although that might not be 100% of the time, as we indicated, because you have students in the classroom as well as online, so you have to go between the two, I would say that in large part from some of the feedback I'm getting, that we are getting that, that interaction. I, I think one thing that's important, whether a student is in the classroom or online in, in this era or even before, is how do we truly get students engaged? How do we make sure that they are on? And, and, and I, I think as we continue to work as a staff and as parents, we'll continue to get better and better and better at that. But obviously, in the beginning, there's a challenge of just understanding how this all works. So I appreciate everyone's patience.
And maybe to add to that, I, I agree with you that we are doing much more than other school districts in the entire state of Pennsylvania. I think our teachers have stepped up and are doing a great job with doing both the traditional and the hybrid at the same time. But maybe then a follow-up event from the engagement would be the amount of homework. I think that the screen time of being on all day long on a screen and then coming home and high school kids and middle school kids, we're hearing a lot of homework. The amount is they're still on another five to six hours after that. So maybe we look at that even too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Maganello. And I, any, to any of the board members, I would appreciate if you have any, any questions, take some time to think about it over tonight. And send to, to Mrs. Mueller, anything you would like included in that staff survey, which is where we will begin, we'll begin there and revisit with results next week. Any other board comment before we move forward to legislative action? Once again, we thank you for submitting all your comments to us. We appreciate it all. We hear you all. And we will further assess situations and talk with administration and staff. And we thank the union as well for submitting their concerns to us. And, and we will, we will, we will get those results next week and then move forward and assess the situation and work collectively as a team. Thank you. June, if you could move the screen down, please. Moving forward to legislative action for this meeting, Mr. Angus Personnel?
Yes, this evening there are three items under Personnel for adoption, and I move to adopt items one through three as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Can I have a roll call, please? Mr. Angus?
Yes.
Mrs. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kehoe?
Yes.
Mrs. Maganello?
Yes.
Mr. Metz?
Yes.
Ms. Pedego?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving forward to salary schedule and labor relations, Mrs. Curtis?
I only have one item and I move to sorry.
That's okay. Move forward for the adoption?
Yes.
For item one. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Can I have a roll call, please? Mr. Angus?
Yes.
Mrs. Kurtz?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yes.
Mrs. Kehoe?
Yes.
Mrs. Maganello?
Yes.
Mr. Metz?
Yes.
Ms. Pedego?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving forward to the superintendent's report, Dr. Paschera.
Sorry, just trying to get unmuted. Yes, I kind of stated it there again, but I'm just proud of the efforts again of our entire staff. By that, I mean, no matter what position you are in in our district, I really appreciate everything that you're doing for our students. And in particular, to those that made comments and those who have not made comments, your ongoing support of the school district and know that we're really trying to do our best to continuously improve and do the very best that we can in these unprecedented times. And I thank you for your support and your efforts and your patience and for your feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving forward to the solicitors' report, Ms. Turnbull?
I have no action items for the board's consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd also like to, to thank Ms. Turnbull this evening for her added and continued support in these very difficult times that we are encountering. Thanks for always, for always being the positive light in the situation. Okay. I have a motion on the floor to adjourn the voting meeting and reconvene the meet and discuss.
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. Moving forward to the meet and discuss board meeting. The meet, this board meeting of the Amberberry School District is held on Wednesday, October 14th, 2020. This meeting is being held to go over the agenda for the regular monthly board meeting that will be held on Wednesday, October 21st, 2020 at 7:00 PM virtually. We've already completed the flag salute. This meeting is being recorded for district purposes. It is or may be published in part or in its entirety on the district's website without the express permission of meeting participants. Can I have a roll call, please? Yes. Mr. Angus?
Yeah.
Mr. Campalong? Mrs. Curtis?
Here.
Mrs. Kehoe?
Here.
Mrs. Maganello?
Here.
Mr. Metz?
Here.
Ms. Pedego?
Here.
Ms. Young?
Here.
Mrs. Fisher?
Here.
Eight present. Thank you. Moving forward, we have covered correspondence this evening. Have any student-teacher recognition or presentations? We covered the pub, public comment, correct, Ms. Turnbull?
Yes.
Yes. Moving forward to the committee reports, education and technology, Mrs. Maganello?
I have nothing to report tonight.
Thank you. Moving forward to finance and budget, Ms. Pedego?
Thank you, Mrs. President. I have three items for discussion this evening. The first two items are to do with our normal monthly bills and salaries for the school district and for the cafeteria. Any discussion? Okay. And the third item is a resolution. It's Resolution 2020-2021-04 BVIU Joint Purchasing Program. It's recommended to approve the resolution to participate in the Beaver Valley Intermediate Unit's Joint Purchasing Program for the 2021 and 2022 school year at no cost to the district. The program includes the categories of general, art, janitorial, athletic equipment, medical supplies, audiovisual and computer equipment and dual-purpose paper supplies. Any discussion?
No? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Pedego. Moving forward to building and grounds, Mr. Angus?
There are no items for discussion this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Campalong is not here this evening. We have nothing to report in athletics. Public relations, Mr. Metz?
Nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Steering and rolls, Mrs. Kehoe?
Yes. Item number one is Policy 146.1 Trauma-Informed Approach. It's a first reading. It is to recommend to direct district staff to develop and implement a plan for trauma-informed approaches to education throughout the district. Is there any questions on that? Item number two is Policy 203 Immunizations and Communicable Diseases. First reading, it is to update the policy to safeguard the school community from the spread of certain communicable diseases. Questions? Item number three, Policy 209 Health Examination/Screening. It is a first reading. It is recommended to update the current policy to ensure that the student's participation in health, safety and physical education courses meet the student's individual needs and the learning potential of each student is not lessen, lessened by a redeemable physical disability. Is there any questions? Item number four, Policy 222 Tobacco and Vaping Products. It is a first reading and it is to update the current policy to prohibit student possession, use, purchase and sell of tobacco and vaping products, including jewels and other electronic cigarettes. Any questions? Item number five, Policy 314 Physical Examination. It is a first reading, also an update to prevent the transmission of communicable diseases in the school setting. Any questions on that? Item number six is Policy 323 Tobacco and Vaping Products. Is recommended as a first reading to update the policy to prohibit student possession, use, purchase and sell of tobacco and vaping products, including jewels and other electronic cigarettes. Is that, is the same as the one up above it? Policy number's different.
One should be for staff, the 323. So we have to correct that.
Yeah, it's gonna have to, it needs a correction. Okay. Any questions on that? Item number seven, Policy 333, I'm sorry, it's 335 Attachment. Family and Medical Leave, the Families First Response Act is recommended as a first reading to revise the policy by adding an attachment to address the emergency leave entitlements, including the amount of qualifying reasons for such leave as established by the FFCRA through the Emergency Paid Sick Leave Act and Emergency Intermittent Leave Provision. Is there any questions on that? Item number eight, Policy 805.2 Identification Badges. It is recommended to renumber Policy 805.2 to line up with the numbering of PSBA. It is recommended to renumber Policy zero five point two to line up with the numbering of PSBA. It will now become School Security Personnel. Any questions? Item number nine, Policy eight zero five point two, School Security Personnel is a first reading and it is to coordinate the safety and security of district students, staff, visitors and facilities. Are there any questions? Item ten, Policy eight two four, Maintaining Professional Adult slash Student Boundaries is a first reading and it is an update to direct that all adults shall be informed of conduct that is prohibited and disciplinary actions that may be applied for violation of board policies, administrative regulations, rules and procedures. Are there any questions? Item number eleven, Policy one zero three, Discrimination slash Title Nine, Sexual Harassment Affecting Students. It is a first reading and it is to adopt School Board Policy one oh three to provide an equal opportunity for all students to achieve their maximum potential through the programs and activities o- offered in the schools without discrimination on the basis of race, color, age, creed, religion, sex, sexual orientation, ancestry, national, national origin, marital status, pregnancy or handicap slash disability. Are there any questions? Item number twelve, Policy one zero four, Discrimination slash Title Nine, Sexual Harassment Affecting Staff. It is a first reading and is to provide to all persons equal access to all categories of employment in this district regardless of race, color, age, creed, religion, sex, sexual orientation, ancestry, national origin, marital status, genetic information, pregnancy or handicap slash disability. Are there any questions? Madam President, that is all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Kehoe. Moving forward to legislative, Ms. Young?
Nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Moving forward to salary schedule and labor relations, Mrs. Curtis?
Um, I have nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Can I have the sunshine law, please, June?
Board of School Directors held an executive session on Wednesday, October fourteenth to discuss personnel matters considering the purchase of lease or real estate matters project to attorney-client privilege and other confidentiality laws.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much for attending this evening. We look forward to hearing you next week. Have a good night.